Stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the republic, to the republic.
I want to call to order the regularly scheduled public meeting for the Lower Gwinnett Board of Supervisors for Tuesday, November fourteenth, two thousand and twenty-three. The board did meet prior to today's meeting, an executive session, to discuss matters of personnel and litigation. We'll start off with public comments, citizens' comments, questions, or concerns for items that are not on the agenda. You can just come up and state your name and address, please.
Hi, I'm Bob Lahn, and he is with me. I live on Stonehouse Road in the Spring House Farm neighborhood, like right out the parking lot, about five hundred feet. And I have a memo.
I'll pick it up.
Okay, I have a memo that I'll email to you, and I just wanted to read it to you now. I had the opportunity to speak to a couple supervisors, and I'm grateful that you heard my concerns, and I just wanted to make it available to everyone. We've been residents for twenty years and we're grateful for your service and the time you invest in Lower Gwinnett. We appreciate the work you do to balance the historic charm with the requirements for modern living. This has to do with the process of cell tower site selection.
Just one second, I'm sorry. So this public comment period is for things that are not on the agenda? That's going to be on the agenda right?
This has to do with the township building? Is that on the agenda?
No, you can go ahead.
Okay, thank you. Sorry. Although that's probably good to qualify. A couple of board members reached out. Thank you for considering multiple sites. We believe by exploring alternate locations and potential solutions, you're working to maintain the character of this township. Regarding site selection, I don't know if these comments, how relevant they are, we're not quite sure where things stand. We weren't around in July, and we're just kind of getting up to speed on the process. Our address is Stonehouse Road, but we face Old Bethland Pike, our entire outdoor living space, and most of our windows face the township building and the open space. It's a beautiful area, walking trails, connected to the stores, and we've seen even more since COVID, tons of people taking advantage of it. And it is truly a beautiful area, and we're grateful for the work of this board and previous boards as well. It shows in our community. In the July eleventh meeting, a neighbor spoke up and mentioned that the Rise Up Towers photos effectively depicted the view from the end of his driveway. We are four hundred and fifty feet away, so I've included, I'll email you guys, some images of what it would look like from our backyard and from our side yard. And we're going to send that to your attention so you have it, and we look forward to your resolution to this project, and we thank everybody for their time and service coming out and doing this for the township. We appreciate it a lot.
Thank you. Any additional comments, questions, or concerns? Anybody online? Seeing none, I'm going to turn this over to our solicitor, Neil Stein.
Good evening, everybody. This is a public hearing to consider an amendment from the record. Public hearing to consider an amendment to a conservation easement which presently applies to the Penland Woods area. And this conservation easement must be amended in order to permit any new construction within Penland Woods. And that would include certainly a cell tower and any related equipment. Because this is a public hearing that's been advertised in the reporter twice, and written notice was mailed to property owners within five hundred feet, possibly beyond five hundred feet, were notified as well. In addition, the hearing was noted prominently on the township website. A court reporter's presence, so if anyone's going to be speaking this evening, please do so one at a time. Please provide your name, address, and where you live in relation to Penland Woods. And it would be appreciated if there was no repetition of prior comments. At this point in time, I'm going to mark certain exhibits since we are making a record. I will mark as Exhibit T one a voluntary declaration of conservation easement. That's the original conservation easement that presently exists. It's dated September nineteen, nineteen ninety-four, and it's recorded in the Montgomery County Recorder of Deeds office in D book fifty-one oh eight, page four seventy. Township Exhibit Two would be the proposed amendment to conservation easement, if the board so decides to amend the easement. T three is the notice of hearing that was advertised. T four are the proofs of publication demonstrating that the notice was properly advertised. T five are presentation materials that the township received from Rise Up, the proposed development entity for the towers. T six is a survey of the property that was performed by the township engineer Gilmore and Associates. I think at this point, the board can make whatever opening statements it wishes to make, if any. Otherwise, I would hold upon Rise Up Towers to make whatever presentation they deem appropriate at this time.
I have no statements to make.
Mr. Malloy?
Thank you very much. Nick Pollan from Rise Up flew in, but he's delayed, so I'll handle the presentation for you. And I didn't bring slides and things. We did not. We have in the audience Andy Peterson. He's our radio frequency engineer who can answer questions, and he has boards that show the tower. But as the solicitor said, and thank you, and by the way, good evening, I'm Mike Malloy from Obermeyer Redmond Maxwell Hippel on behalf of Rise Up Towers. And good evening to the township staff. It's exactly as your solicitor said, at the beginning of this process, it started with the combination of a petition from citizens in Lower Gwinnett and Rise Up Towers making contact with the township and presenting Rise Up's program, which it presents. And that is a Rise Up almost exclusively leases ground from townships, municipalities, authorities, and the like from governmental entities, and then pays forty percent of the gross revenue of the tower as ground rent. I understand that, you know, the rent is not as important to the township. Various people have expressed that to me time and time again. This is not a money issue. This is not a thing that that the township's looking to, you know, make a lot of revenue off of, right? It's twofold. One, it's public service, right? As we move from landlines to cell phones almost exclusively, we as responsible people must provide access so people can use those cell phones when they need to. And second, it's a public safety issue. You have no coverage in a park where people walk, where people jog, where people could get hurt, and the surrounding area of that park. And one of Rise Up's things that we're very proud of is that we put emergency services equipment on the towers free of charge, rent-free. And that is not something that all tower companies do. We just put our tower up and just completed with Verizon near the Oxford Valley Mall. There are four different municipal services on that tower. Each one of them that we put up there for free. So this is the first step in a two-part process, and if you don't mind me going off subject, and Joe, I don't know your last name, Fitz. Oh, you're Bob. Oh, okay, I'm sorry. Okay, Bob. So I thought you were Joe. Sorry. Well, we are actively looking to relocate the township tower. That is ongoing. I am in touch with Ken Amy, by the way, who is your neighbor, right? And I'm happy to do the same with you. If you give me your number and stuff, I'll keep you in the loop, okay? So that's Tower One and not the subject tonight. And the Tower Two is going to, in Penland Woods Park. It is under a conservation easement, and we understand there's sensitivity to that conservation easement. We have the same priorities that we think we share some of the priorities of maybe the people that are concerned. There will be no trees removed. There will be no additional disturbance in the park. It will be placed in a maintenance area, and we will move the existing cinder blocks, or whatever they call those, those big traffic blocks, and we will relocate them somewhere else, or the township's going to relocate them. We will put the tower there in place of the blocks, and then we're going to do a poured concrete structure in front of the tower so they can return that area to, you know, to the township for its use. But there's not going to be any disturbance in the woods. It's already an area that is developed, and, you know, that's the way we, you know, that's the only way we would have it. We're not, you know, we like to cooperate, and we like to make the township a public, you know, partner of ours. So that's really all I have. I'm, of course, available for questions. Andy Peterson's available if anybody has them. But I thank you very much for your time and for working through this process with us. We really appreciate it. And we're looking forward to putting the towers up. Thanks.
Are there any questions, Mr. Malloy?
I'm forwarding. State your name.
Yeah, sure.
You have to use the microphone, state your name and your address.
Does this work? Okay? Okay. I'm Beth Pilling, and I live on Sweetsford Road between Schoolhouse Road and Township Line Road. It's P as in Paul, I L L I N G. My first name is Beth.
Oh, no, just comment.
Yeah, I I wouldn't know what to swear to, I'm sorry. You know, I'm sorry. So I've been a resident of the township since nineteen seventy-two, and you didn't hear this from me, but since the nineteen forties, I've actually lived in probably within ten miles of Lower Gwinnett Township. So I have one of those annoying collective memories. But, and first of all, you know, I can't tell you how impressed I am that you guys are willing to take the time to be township supervisors. I know a lot of township officials, and, you know, it's really a tough job, so thank you very much. I appreciate it. As you weigh your decision about the cell tower location, I thought you might benefit from a little bit of that collective memory. For twenty years, I had the pleasure of managing Montgomery County's open space program. And during that time, I worked with all sixty-two municipalities. I got to see a lot of wonderful places. And county grant funding ended up protecting really thousands of acres of open space. So that really left me as an experience with a sense of awe and a great respect for all of the hard work and belief in the future that was shown by a lot of township residents and the officials. They worked tirelessly to protect their special places. So I want to make it clear that I'm now retired. I'm not representing Montgomery County, nor am I representing any particular organization. I'm just representing that collective memory. I came aboard with Montgomery County Open Space Program in nineteen ninety-five, and that was hard on the heels of your acquisition of Penland Woods. So I wasn't involved in the specific acquisition project, but after I came on board, from the very beginning, Penland Woods was the poster child for open space preservation, and that wasn't just in Montgomery County, but it was really in all of southeastern Pennsylvania. Montgomery County was a trailblazer in providing public funds for open space preservation, and the Penland Woods project was really an inspiration for municipalities all around the region. It showed that permanent protection was possible and that it could be an unbreakable commitment to the future. So the first county open space program, which funded the Penland Woods acquisition, was a hundred million dollars, and it was based upon that commitment that everyone was making to the future. The use of public funding was on behalf of everyone. Future generations could count on the fact that private, commercial, general, municipal, and utility projects were not and would not be in the future appropriate uses for these precious properties. The success of that first program made it possible in the early two thousands to reserve an additional hundred and fifty million dollars for projects. And again, that permanent preservation prohibited the use for private, commercial, general, municipal, and utility purposes. During that twenty years, I was associated with the county program. The question regularly came up from municipalities for couldn't those restrictions be broadened for understandable purposes, but the answer consistently was no, it was not appropriate. There were a few instances where changes were permitted, and what that entailed was the property, often the entire property, needed to be replaced with new open space that was a net gain in not only dollar value, but public benefit, public use, and acreage as well. Now, I know that Pennsylvania DCNR, and I think the federal land and water conservation program follows the same approach. Pennsylvania DCNR would consider the installation of a cell tower a property conversion, and that would trigger the same type of replacement approach that I just described. So I know absolutely without question, you're looking out for the good of your residents, and, you know, you didn't hear this from me, but I have a cellphone too. But the thing is, is that you know, there are some things maybe you can consider as you make your decision, and one is that programs such as those provided by Montgomery County were successful because the public had faith in the permanence of the open space projects they were funding. That faith was based upon the assumption that a grantee was making a commitment to honor its responsibility to keep that land intact and for only the intended purposes. As the program's first great example of an open space success story, Penland Woods is always going to play a larger-than-life role in the history of our open space program. As time goes on, decisions are being asked of leaders who weren't involved in the original preservation project. And it's absolutely understandable that those leaders would be less aware of the reasons for restricting that land. But each time that commitment's breached, even for reasons of understandable public benefit, becomes easier for other grantees to also make changes to their original commitment. And once an intended use is implemented on an open space property, an unintended use, it sets the stage for expansion or similar uses. I think of that kind of as a slippery slope situation. In my experience, programs that may currently or in the future provide grant funding are understandably less likely to do so if a previous project has slipped by the wayside. So I know how important cell service is in modern-day life, but I think as you are considering what you're going to do, be absolutely sure that there are not possible alternatives for putting this, because once a cell tower is there, it's going to be there forever, and it's going to lead to other cell towers. And, you know, I thank you for, again, for your commitment. I wish you the best of luck, because I know it's a tough decision, but in a way, I sort of think of myself as the Lorax. I have to speak for the land, and, you know, it's really, really, really important, because once that commitment is breached, it's just not possible to get it back. So thank you, guys. I really appreciate your attention.
Thank you, Beth. Any additional comments? You have to come up. Do you have to use the microphone? Nobody can hear me. I'm sorry. Just for the people on Zoom.
Some folks, individuals that I know from whatever, the community contacted me and asked me to, and I'm sorry, Mimi, you asked me to do it, to check out Pan Ambler Park. And so we did. We ran that through RF, and we ran it through T-Mobile, and they said, no, it was not a viable alternative to this location. They said it may be a location that they may want to relocate to in the future, but it's not suitable to cover the Penland Woods Park area. So just to let you know that we did take a look at that and analyze that.
Before you go, center here, can you tell us how many locations that you did analyze and how you came to the conclusion for those two? Two locations to cover kind of where the gaps are in Lower Gwinnett.
Well, Andy forgot more about, you know, RF than I'll ever know. So why don't we bring Andy up? How, Andy, can you just remind everybody of the, come on up and remind everybody of the process? It starts with, you know, with coverage gaps, right, that we have from radio frequency maps and mapping, and then we look, right? And, you know, originally, the township building, for example, we look, we look for the town, you know, for the We can talk about it in either context. We're talking about the process by which we selected sites. So in either case, it's right, we start with a, and maybe we can put this somewhere so the public can also That's correct. So if, no, let me stay on topic, okay?
So for the record, could you identify yourself, please? Excuse me? Could you identify?
Michael Vander Swan, six Richard's Way. Vander Swan, V S in Victor, A N D E R Z S in zebra, W A N. Michael.
Thank you. Sure.
Yeah, they are. Actually, can you put them up? That'd be great, Jamie.
Mr. Malloy, could you identify your
Sure. This is
Andrew Peterson, P E T E R S, P E T E R S O H N. For putting those up.
Who are you, Malloy?
So my firm is DBM Engineering. I've been involved in the design of these type facilities now about twenty-five years. Worked for all the major carriers either directly or since the beginning of starting my firm back in two thousand and six as a consultant. And I also worked for some smaller tower developers like Rise Up. And in this case, we've got what I would call, this, this, this illustration is specific to T-Mobile. T-Mobile is the anchor tenant for both of these facilities. However, the other wireless providers that are in the marketplace also have similar gaps in their service in this area. And I think maybe the best place to start before we, before we look at this, I think if we go to the end of the slide deck, there is maybe it's not in this version. Is that the last slide then? Okay, well, I have it on here, but there are some existing tall structures in the area. I don't, I, I'm hoping everyone can see this, but the point being that sure. So this is a map of the area that I've indicated some of the existing tall structures where there's already some wireless facilities, or there could be. Central to this exhibit or this map is Penland Bluebell Pike. And of course, the park, which is kind of very much central to the exhibit. There are six existing tall structures that surround the area, and that is, of course, where we first look to add antennas, whether it's a water tower or existing wireless facility, utility structure. They are occasionally used. So that's where we go first. We look for existing tall structures. All the wireless providers do that. It's faster to market. It's cheaper. There's usually less involved in from a permitting process.
I'm sorry, can I ask you a question?
Sure.
So when you're looking at existing tall structures, how tall are those?
So anything that is north of a hundred feet is worth looking at. But a typical antenna center line in this type of suburban environment is going to be anywhere from, let's say, a hundred twenty to a hundred fifty feet is a more realistic height. Maybe even, maybe even a little bit taller, depending on the details and circumstances.
So if there was a hundred and ten-foot water tower, and it was in a place that would allow coverage of Penland, say, would you go with that structure instead of building a one hundred and fifty-foot tower?
Well, it depends. If, if, you know, the old saying, the basketball saying, you can't teach height. So it's always, it's always better to have a little bit more height. So depending on, you know, where that tower's located, water tanks are usually located at higher elevations. That way the gravity effect is more substantial for providing pressure to the water system. So oftentimes, a hundred ten-foot water tank could provide the same overall height as a hundred fifty-foot tower, but again, depends on the specifics.
Is there a height above which you won't go? In other words, would you ever need to adjust the height to be higher in the future?
Yeah, there are circumstances where we do tower extensions. If that's what the question is, let's say we build, you know, let's say AT&amp;T builds a hundred twenty-foot tower, and then Verizon comes along and needs a little bit more height there. There are circumstances where towers can be extended. Oftentimes, they have to be built to be extendable with a bulked-up foundation and base, and usually a flange on the top to be extendable, but that, I'm getting a little bit out of my lane with that construction
Okay.
information.
I'm just wondering, you know, I've been concerned in the past about the hundred and fifty-foot height of the, what we've been asked to consider. And I just wanted to sort of understand restrictions or the requirements for that height, but I'm sorry to interrupt. Go ahead with your
The other thing to consider too is, in a case like this where we have a need for all the wireless carriers, we always want to build a tower that's going to be attractive as a co-location opportunity. And the industry standard is ten-foot separation between antenna center lines. So if T-Mobile's at one fifty here, by the time we place the fourth carrier in the marketplace on the pole, we're down to a height of a hundred ten feet. If I did that math right. So actually, we'll be at a hundred twenty feet. In any case, so that's also important to consider. Like I said, towers can sometimes be extendable, but it's much easier to just to build, you know, with that co-location in mind. That way, there's not this proliferation of towers in a community.
I'm sorry, Andy. I don't want to turn this into a presentation. I did ask specifically, can you tell me how many different sites you did evaluate? We came up with the two sites that were recommended specifically, the site in Penland. And then if you could tell us the coverage area as far as the gaps you were looking to cover.
Right. So on the first question, I wasn't really involved in the examination of other sites other than the, the site that was just mentioned. I forget the name of the park to the pardon?
Or Pan Ambler Park?
Yeah, the Pan Ambler Park, right, to the, right, to the southeast.
Okay.
But, you know, I know that Rise Up is, they're always working with the municipalities to find available space for for the installation of these towers, and I think that these were locations that were suggested by the township staff.
You have to come and talk on the microphone.
Beginning of the process, the beginning of this process, we met with the township, and we said are interested in the program. And we got a list of township properties, and then we ran those township properties by T-Mobile and Verizon and AT&amp;T. And T-Mobile was the first and anchor carrier who expressed interest in it. In the two locations that Andy's discussing, the two coverage In, in the two locations that Andy's discussing, the two coverage locations. So once we were in those coverage locations, we just matched it to the appropriate space. But from a more global level, right? We look for the least impactful place possible. You know, the place that's going to impact the least amount of people, right? Or least people are going to see it, are going to be bothered by it, you know, and still maintain that coverage. You know, we like the Penland Woods location because the portion of the place is already developed. It's a maintenance area, it's already a little, you know, unsightly, right? We might be able to make it look better at the end, you know, if you ignore the tower part. But, 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 you know, it, it's, it's an area that doesn't require any disturbance. There's access already, you know, readily there. And so it's, it's an ideal kind of spot. It's, it's proximate to residential, but not right on top of residential either. And Pen Ambler Park, you know, gets really close to there. You know, gets closer to residential and could potentially, you know, be more impactful to the residents than than the Penland Woods.
You guys are making me feel like I'm a lawyer. I'm probably one of the few lawyers not here. Can you tell me the number of sites that you evaluated before you made the determination?
Within this, within this coverage area, I don't know. Because we did, we did the reverse engineering, right? We took the sites that the township had. And then we said, guys, you know, carriers, where are your coverage, you know, problems? And then we literally took those and said, well, you know, the township building is ideal. Or that little piece of land down there, you know, that the township owns, but that was kind of crossed off. And Penland Woods Park, you know, given the nature of the park, the way that it's situated, the maintenance area became a a location. There, you know. Every time we've had a dialogue and we've been asked to look at other locations, we looked at other locations, right? The township building isn't work, you know, is, isn't working for some people, we're in a, you know, trying to, trying to get that done, you know? And, and so.
So I just wanted to be clear, from what you said. The township gave you a list of all of the property that the township owned and the, and where the gaps were.
It wasn't all of it, right? It, it was, it was, it was just a refined list. Because we, we looked at locations and we said, some, some of them, you know, they didn't want to give us, right? They were too close, you know, too close to residents, too close to people.
Okay.
Right? So these were viable, possible, potential locations that we looked at. And that's kind of, you know, that's kind of our business model. We do it on municipal ground. So we're not going to necessarily, you know, look for that private entity unless we're otherwise directed.
Okay, thank you.
Sorry, I wasn't more direct than answering.
That's all I have, that's all I had. I don't know if anybody else had any additional questions.
That's, I have a question. This is probably out of left, left field, but in light of this property at Penland Woods being in an area with a conservation easement. I, I'm, you know, feeling very. I, I, I'm having my doubts about approving it now that I've been educated about that. Is there any, are there any sort of environmental studies done prior to erecting these things? And I don't mean for. Safety of the radiation, whatever it might be associated with the tower. But I mean, rather for either ground or aerial wildlife.
Yes, absolutely. It's part of the federal approval process that every tower, not just ours, needs to go through. And as part of that process, we run a full PINDY search. So Pennsylvania Natural Diversity Index Search. Sorry, again. Inventory, right, inventory. So we do, we run full environmental federally required. We have an environmental scientist that comes in, runs the report. We have another tower that got a hit, it's three hundred feet away from a, a wetland, you know. We're doing a bog turtle study on that. So it does, it's a very thorough review, yes.
And can you enlighten us about how this review is done? Is there just an inventory of animals before and after construction or?
Inventory of animals? I'm not sure. Well, it doesn't impact the wildlife, it doesn't impact nature, but the, you know, it's, again, it's a disturbed area already. So we're putting the foundation, everything in an area that's already been. Used for maintenance and storage.
Yeah, that, that use, that sounds like it may not have been, it shouldn't have been there to begin with. In light of the conservation easement, but so I, I wouldn't use that.
Baseball fields and, you know.
Baseball fields are allowed. Concrete barriers are probably not, wasn't allowed. But. How, how can I be? How can I feel comfortable that this was, is not going to have a negative environmental impact?
Well, if we, if we decide on the location, we'll, we'll perform the study. I can share the study with, of course, share the study with the township. I mean, you are the landlord, right? But there is no indication, no data, nothing whatsoever. That says cell towers cause any problem to the environment or to us. So I, I, I don't know what, how to answer your question, other than we're required under law. In order to get our federal permitting and, you know, the carriers need this too. We have to do a full phase one study, full phase one environmental study. We have to run a PINDY, we have to do. It's, there's a NEPA and SHIPA. NEPA is the environmental and SHIPA is the historic, you know, the historic preservation study.
So I agree with you, my sense is that cell towers don't impact negatively on the environment. But you're not telling me exactly what that phase one investigation is.
I don't have my environmental expert here, but I'd be happy to bring him back and put you in touch with him. I mean, we're going to have to have another proceeding on the lease. We're going to have to have another proceeding on changes to the ordinance. This is not the first, or sorry, this is the first step in the, in the hopefully two tower process. So, you know, I'm just the lawyer, right? And we're just doing a hearing on the covenant tonight. So I'm kind of, you know, I'm, I'm engaged to do that. But I'd be happy to bring my environmental scientist back and he can tell the board and you everything that is involved in that. But it's extensive. I mean, and it, we get, if, if, if there's a problem, we get flagged and then we have to do a phase two environmental study to go out and investigate things and. You know, do a thorough check to make sure that we're not going to disturb anything.
Okay, I, I will look forward to your next presentation in which you explain thoroughly how those investigations are done. And I, I would like to say, I know you've already been put through a lot of hoops, jumping through hoops.
I'm a land use lawyer.
To get, to move this project forward and the township citizens really do want a cell tower. So, you know, appreciate the work you've done so far.
And I appreciate you too, and I appreciate the process. It's, it's something I deal with all the time. And it's, it's, as, as long as we're moving forward, we're very, very happy, you know, with the process so far. So thank you very much, I appreciate it, and I will bring him back, okay?
Any additional comments?
Michael Vander Swan again, six Richard's Way. So if you're finished discussing the Penland Park Tower, no?
We're still in the hearing.
Okay, I want to talk about the sighting of the second tower later. Thank you, let me know when you're done.
Okay.
No comments virtually. Right, the board at this point.
Can you just say your name and?
I'm Benjamin Jones, my wife Diana, we live at eight oh two Creekview Drive in Penland. Just a couple of comments about the open space. First off, everybody loves the park, everybody loves the area, the openness of Lower Gwinnett. Obviously, that's why many people live here. The intent of the open space obviously was to prohibit types of structures. Obviously, a cell tower is a structure. But the intent was to keep open space. So when you walk through, in essence, things remain the same. The environment was protected and more importantly, wildlife, things of that nature, folks are, are there. And again, I'm sure that whatever tests are done and so forth, that be part of whatever happens in the future and your consideration. One of the things that's important, I think, is that when you look at open space. And you look at what the needs are of the community, some of those things, as we talked about, were twenty years ago. Twenty years ago, they couldn't have anticipated what we have today. What we have today is what really a township supervisor needs to look at. Your primary responsibilities, the health, safety and welfare of the community. And the way it is right now, our neighbors don't have cell phone coverage, they don't have landlines. There's utilities that are already in the park, utilities throughout our community. This is just something that at this point, we are looking for solutions for the future. And maybe in the future, it's satellite and towers will go away, who knows? But things have to be looked at and looked at to determine what our needs are for the protection of the public. And as part of that, I think this board needs to take a look at that and balance that against the open space. If you're looking at a structure, a cell tower that's up and up in the air. You're not looking at significant impervious surface. You're not looking at, you know, coverage, you're not looking at drainage conditions and things of that nature. You do have apparently some storage there and things of that nature, whether or not it belongs there or not, that's up to you folks to decide. Real question is, is whether or not the needs for emergency services, response and so forth, that you're protecting the community need to be there. And really, cell phones today are our, our primary, are our primary function. I mean, we have landlines, many of us, okay? But those landlines aren't used, okay, for anything else other than things coming into the building for your alarm systems and things of that nature. The ones, and I believe my neighbors don't have landlines going into their properties at all. Yet that was a subdivision that was approved and development approved today. So we see the difference between what used to be approved and what are today. And what would be required on a telecommunications basis, whether or not. Those telecommunications providers would actually provide additional lines and so forth to, to bring into the developments that are developed today. Are only going to bring new challenges, which are overhead wires and things of that nature, as opposed to underground wires, which of course. Are more expensive and become more of an issue. So I would ask that the board of supervisors take that in consideration and understanding what the primary need is. And weighing that against the impact that it will have on the conservation easement. Thank you. By the way, I don't, I understand how difficult the decision is.
This point in time, if there's no additional comment, the board has a few different options. You could, at this point, decide to vote to amend the conservation easement in accordance with the amendment document that's already been presented to you. You could reserve decision until a later date. As there are other steps in the process that have been mentioned, including an ordinance amendment and a lease. You are under no time pressure, time limitation in which you have to act. We could also keep the record open if you feel there are additional witnesses that you would like to hear from before making a decision. So those are really the three options.
Just to clarify. The advertisement is the advertisement, if we make no decision or make no. Statement tonight, we can still do so any point in the future.
Yes, if we're not going to announce a date certain tonight at which a decision would be made, then we would simply re-advertise the date on which the decision would be made.
So do we need to give notice of the re-advertising of the date that the decision would be made?
Yes.
And is there a timeframe?
No.
Questions, comments, discussion from the board?
I am not ready to vote on this tonight.
Okay. So what does it mean to leave the record open? Tessie had questions of Mr. Malloy about the environmental studies. That you want before you make a decision?
I, I'd like a little more information. I'm also, the, the board knows that I'm very pro open space. And I'm, I'm having real difficulty now justifying amending that conservation easement in my mind. Because. As Beth pointed out, you know, it's, it's a very. A conservation easement is a promise that you make to keep a parcel of land. As, as it is described in that easement. And it, you know, it's, it's a promise that was made to future generations to maintain that area. Lower Gwinnett doesn't have a, an abundance of open space that is free for everyone to, to enjoy. And so I, I'm struggling with maintaining that easement. As the gentleman said, it's a very difficult decision to, to, to make, to, to break that. Or to amend that conservation easement.
Okay. I appreciate that. I guess my question is. Does anybody else have any other? Statements, comments, questions, anything that they want to add?
I would just prefer that if we're going to delay the vote, that we have some sort of timing in mind. I don't. I don't want to be in a position where, you know, we're four or five months down the road. Because this is sort of an urgent need. From my perspective in the, and from a lot of our residents in the community. I mean, could we agree that we'll have it on the agenda for the next meeting or in two more meetings?
Mr. Malloy, would you be able to have your environmental consultant here at our next meeting? So the answer is yes, we can keep the record open until the next regularly scheduled meeting of the board of supervisors. You could hear additional testimony and make a decision at that point, if that's acceptable.
And this would count as advertising for that decision?
We don't close the record, so if the record is not closed and it's open, he brings in additional witnesses to testify.
And we're announcing a date certain that will be at the next meeting, which I guess is November twenty eighth.
Correct. Okay. Is that sufficient timeframe? I'm asking Tessie, who, who, is that a sufficient timeframe?
You know, the, the timeframe is, doesn't matter as long as we get the information. So it could be tomorrow, it could be two weeks from now.
But we have to give public notice, so I'm just want to be clear, I just want to be clear, you have specific questions that you want to ask the environmental specialist. Rise up, that's going to do the environmental study in the future. Before you make a determinations about the, the amendment to the conservation easement. Because the conservation easement and the environmental study that would happen after and before. Tower permit would be processed and given and before the tower would be erected are not necessarily related. I just want to make sure you understand, a conservation easement and making an amendment to the conservation easement is simply the easement around the property. You understand the environmental, okay, I just wanted to be sure, but that was, those questions that you want to ask are not related to the conservation easement, correct?
Oh, they are in my mind, because conservation means a conservation of the environment. So if there's an environmental impact, then it's, you know, I don't, I definitely don't want to amend the easement.
Neil, can you clarify the conservation easement as it relates to the property?
Conservation easement, which dates back to nineteen ninety four, creates two zones on the property, easement area one and easement area two. Provides that easement area one is to be kept in its, essentially in its natural state, other than potentially trails. Easement area two was limited to essentially playing fields and. Parking area, the proposed tower, as I understand it, is proposed for easement area two. The original easement contains an amendment process, which seemed to contemplate that it would be, could be changed at some point in the. um, which seemed the contemplate that it would be, could be changed at some point in the future. Um, the proposed amendment would be strictly limited, uh, to the construction and operation of a single cellphone tower and the pertinent equipment in the location adjacent to the parking area. And, uh, formerly used or currently used as a material storage area for the public works department, together with a right of way for ingress and egress over existing roads. Uh, so it's a very limited amendment to the conservation easement. If there's additional testimony that's required, I would suggest that the board, uh, someone on the board can make a motion to keep the record open until November 28th, at which time, uh, Mr. Malloy's environmental consultant could be here to answer any questions. And if you're satisfied, you can make a decision at that time.
Okay. So I just wanted to make sure that everyone is clear. This is just an amendment to the conservation easement and a easement number two.
And we won't have by even Mr. Malloy, when your environmental specialist comes, he's not going to have the results of the environmental study. He would just be able to, I guess.
Could you just come up? You can't talk until you get to the microphone.
He just would be clarifying the process or the government regulations associated with that process.
Yeah, that's correct. We're, unless we have a site, we're not undertaking an investigation, right? I mean, we, it's thousands and thousands of dollars in investment to go through all of these processes, applications, paperwork.
Right.
So yeah, so we will, we will know that we will have him here or, or his, one of his associates to discuss process to the testing, the procedure, but not the site yet. No.
All right. So I just want to, that's what you're looking for, Tessie?
Yes.
Okay. You want to make the motion?
So moved, um. I, I, um, I make a motion to keep the, the record open, uh, for tonight, uh, until November 28th. Such time that we get, gather more information, uh, before voting on, um, accepting the terms of the modification of the conservation easement.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Motion carries. Thank you. Move to.
Close the record.
Move to close the record.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You'll be back on the 28th. Thank you.
So public comment had concluded, but Mr. VanderWise, come on up. Yep. Come on up and tell us your comment.
Thank you, Daniel. Um, my question is about the consideration of the different sighting for the township tower to the Gwinnett Academy Grammar School property. So, uh, I understand the reason for looking for a second position. But Rise Up Towers, have they done an analysis to show that the tower sighting at the grammar school will be just as effective as at the township building?
That's why I wanted you to, that's why I wanted you to ask your question before they left. So that Rise Up is still here to be able to give you an answer.
Yes, it's better. It's better. It's better.
Thank you. Uh, uh, what is holding up the decision then to use that as the, as the site?
Let Mr. Malloy answer that as well.
The Sisters of Mercy. The Sisters of Mercy. Uh, they own the property and yeah, so Oklahoma, Oklahoma, they're, while they're here, they're in Lower Marion, they're Lower Marion. And, um, uh, Lower Gwinnett, uh, sure, at the university and the thing, right? They're everywhere, but they own the land and they own the property. Uh, I mean, I don't want to get ahead of myself, but we're, we've been in discussions with them for months and their board, their trustees, their people, everybody locally is on board with it. They want it. We're gonna give them some money for a sign, you know, they're, they're ready to go. We've been actively engaged with them and trying to push the sisters to, uh, to reach a decision, um, quickly, so we can get it underway. Uh, they don't like cell towers? The sisters said they don't like them, but you know, I, I think we can get around it. I think we get past it. Exactly, exactly. And I, i- i- it's, it's, it's been very slow but positive.
Would it be i- i- impactful in any way, do you think, if the township sent a letter in support or if residents sent?
The township is already being very helpful.
We're already very helpful.
There's some individuals being very helpful. Yes, yes. Yep.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, sir. Thank you. Uh, next up. Well, since we have comments, but does anyone else have any additional comments? Okay, seeing none. Next up, we have resolution 202325 for subdivision plan to adjust the lot line at 1304 Gypsy Hill Road. If representation wants to come forward?
Hi, Wayne Kiefer with Show Walter, representing the Britons, the applicant for this project. Um, very simple lot line change. They want to acquire three quarters of an acre from their neighbor. It'll make their lot more conforming than it is now. It's a greatly undersized lot. There is no proposed construction. Uh, we received a letter from township engineer. There are four comments. They're all will comply. Really, there's only one plan change. We had a typo in the zoning data. Everything else is really administrative and will be taken care of. I'm happy to answer any questions, but it's pretty straightforward. The gray area you see on the plan is the area that will be transferred from the Durham Trust to the Britons.
Are any questions from the board?
Could you confirm that your clients have approved the contents of the resolution?
They have. Unfortunately, they're away this week. They did re, uh, review the resolution. They're fine with it and hope to get a copy to the township sign by the end of the week.
Thank you.
Any additional questions? Seeing none. Thank you so much. Uh, so we have before us, um, resolution for a subdivision plan to adjust the lot line. We have a memo included as well from our, um, township staff outlining that the application is for land conveyance only with no proposed construction improvements. Um, there is a recommend, recommended action for Oscar Grant preliminary of final approval. 1304 Gypsy Hill Lot Line Adjustment included as well as that resolution, which I'm not going to, uh, read in its entirety. I'd like to make a motion to approve. Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Motion carries. Thank you. Next up, we have the review of the 2024 budget. Turn it over to our township manager. And our finance director, just a township.
Thank you. So, um, first I, I want to thank Melinda Haldeman, our finance director, who has survived her first, um, municipal budget. So it, e- every time we do a budget and, and all of the staff, there's a lot of people who put a lot of work into putting together, um, the basics. We have a complete draft of the 2024 budget for the board to discuss tonight. Um, but it, it's also something to behold. The first time you're going through the whole thing, there's a lot of moving parts to it. And Melinda did a great job, um, with a lot of help from Mary Trusino too, and as well as a lot of other people. So, um, so one thing that makes it a little bit easier is that fortunately Lower Gwinnett is in very good shape financially. Um, we weren't, you know, scraping down, trying to figure out how to balance the budget. Uh, we, we have, our, our tax receipts have been doing well. Um, with there are surpluses in the operating funds. There is, as you know, a very ambitious capital plan in the budget, and that's really where we need. So we definitely need specific direction on a couple of the projects in the capital plan. Um, and need to know if you have any questions and any other changes that you would like to see for the budget tonight. Uh, that, the way the process would work is, was hopefully by the end of this discussion, you'd be ready to make a motion to authorize advertising of the preliminary budget for public review. It's already on the website, but that would include any changes that are made tonight. And, um, it, that means putting a legal notice in the newspaper so that we'd be ready by your last meeting of the year to come back and bring the final budget to you for approval. So for, there were two questions, two projects in particular where there were, um, I think just some questions. And that was whether to keep the, um, money in the budget. This isn't necessarily authorizing the project. It's just whether we keep the funding in the budget for the pickleball courts that were proposed at the YMCA. And then also, um, as far as the kind of the timing and the funding for the fencing that's proposed around Ingersoll Park, um, which would help us with the budget, but also at the next meeting, we'll be asking the board to authorize two grant submissions. And there was questions about whether that would be considered as part of the match for that project.
What is the bill for the Ingersoll Park fencing and how much can we get through that grant?
Uh, the, right now, so we have $300,000 in the budget for the fence. Uh, we did, Jim Hirsch from Gilmore has gotten, um, a revised estimate. The latest estimate that we have is for $270,000. So hopefully a little bit less. So the idea wasn't that we'd use the grant to pay for the fencing, but that you'd hold off doing the fencing because you can't, if you're going to use it for a match, you cannot do that work until we would hear whether we got the grant at some point in 2024. I don't know when that would be. Um, but the, the grant amount, Jamie, is almost a million dollars for. So we would use, and, and that's more a grant, a match is not required for the local shares grant application, but we've been told that it would make our grant application more competitive if there is some kind of match. So there, that, there had just been discussions since there was kind of consideration of that as a separate but related project of whether you would want to do that. Or you could, you know, I, I know there's also been a, a lot of concern, pressure requests to get that, the fencing replaced all throughout, not replace, just replacing it, but adding the additional fencing that's proposed before the Little League season starts in the spring. That also can work. Um, we have reserves, um, in place that we could use as a match still. Um, and, and perhaps ask the, give the Little League some time and see if they could help contribute to the match.
Yeah. So I, just a little update, um, and as you guys know, I've been a proponent of getting this fencing um, done for the Little League before opening day, if we can. Um, I have spoken with, um, folks from the Little League and you know, this, this has been a very high priority project, given the safety concerns for not only Little League players and families, but also cars driving by. Um, so one option, as Mimi mentioned, would be to use the funds that we already have for the fencing to get it done by the spring. And then the Little League has, um, agreed that they would, you know, engage in their best efforts to fundraise to try and come up with as much of the match as possible um, for this grant application. So rather than using the 300,000 for the fencing or hopefully less, they, they do think they can limit the scope a little bit and get, get the pricing down, maybe even a little bit less than the 270. Um, but you know, if we could, we could sort of front load that cost and then rely on them to fundraise as much of the match um, for the rest of the park renovations. Um, and they'd have, you know, a year or over a year to do that. Um, this is, they really didn't fundraise before. Um, so there's been a lot of changes on their board and I know that they're really active in trying to raise money. The signs are helping. They're also starting to plan events, um, for the coming season. And so while they probably wouldn't be able to raise as much money as we would need for a match, they could, you know, put a lot of skin in the game, um, which maybe will make the grant application even more attractive because we'll be partnering with our.
What is the match? So the only question I have is it, we're the landowner. Could they provide the match? Like legally, could they provide the match to us? This may be a Neil question.
Okay, that's for the, it's the funder and is, is, I don't, uh, they oftentimes, the, um, state agencies like it if there's more than one match and especially if there's something besides the township. So there's community support for this project, right?
You know, I'm saying if we just address the fencing, we fix the fencing and then say through their fundraising efforts, what they can contribute would be utilized as a, a, a dollar value to the match in our application.
We'd have to make a commitment.
That's what I was going to say.
We would have a match. We would.
Okay. Cause I was going to say, we can't, we can't send an application.
No, no, no. We would say, this is the match, this is the match. The township commits to it, but the Little League has committed to raising as much of that as they can. They just can't, they couldn't give a number, obviously, without having raised the money yet.
Yeah. Um. And we give them a timeframe as far as addressing it.
And I don't think, um.
And that would allow us to get the fencing, because it's more of a health and safety for me.
Yeah.
So the reason why I would want to prioritize doing this this year immediately so that the kids playing this year, we can ensure their health and safety and the parents and the spectators, cars and so forth, being in there and around the baseball park, knowing that no one would get harmed.
Yeah, I would, I would agree with that approach, but I'm unclear, um, after the fence is paid for, how much more additional money?
I think the match, um, I don't know if we know, uh, Jim had mentioned it would be like in the 150 range.
Um, I, well, I think for, yeah, well, I think the idea for both LSA grants was, um, about a 20% match. So whatever the final cost ends up being, which he says is in the 850, it's probably going to be slightly under 850. So it would be 20% of that total.
And that grant application would be for the, um, bathrooms, rep, you know, snack stand renovation, and it would also be for the seating area for.
Yeah. So we're, so we're pulling things apart, essentially. We're going to go ahead and pay for the fence for safety reasons, which I think is a priority. But the, everything else is going to go with the, we're going after a matching grant and the Little League is going to raise some money.
No, actually the grant, the local share grant does not require a match. But if you do provide a match, it incentivizes, it almost lifts your grant up like you're invested in this project and ideally you are prioritizing it.
And they're gonna, they're gonna raise as much money as they can, but they couldn't promise that they would raise that level of funds within a year. Um, so I think the township would still, we'd have to understand that any gap in that, um, fundraising that they do, the township would be committing to pay that match. So if it's an $860,000 grant or whatever.
170,000.
170,000, if the Little League can come up with a portion of that.
I think you should define that portion. Give them a goal. But if they don't do it, we still have to pay it.
Yeah, I think the goal is 100%, but I just, um.
Well, that's unrealistic.
Of course, yeah. They've only fundraised for the last year.
I don't know if unrealistic if we give them a timeframe. No, I mean, uh, 100, 170,000.
Yeah, I don't think they'll be able to raise that. Just in the past, historically.
Okay, I'd like to. Guys gotta shoot for the stars.
Yeah.
Goal made. They need something to shoot for.
I think the problem is they can't, they're not going to be able to commit to a number because they don't have the money. So what happens if they commit to say 50,000 and then they can't raise that?
We also don't know if we would get the full amount too.
Right. We don't know what level of.
They might only fund half of that project.
Yeah. But I think what was important to me, I mean, I think, I think these projects are important projects anyway. They should have bathrooms at that park. Um, so the township paying for the fencing and also contributing towards those other improvements financially, um, makes sense to me. And then I think it makes, makes it even more, you know, compelling if the Little League is committed to fundraising as much as they can to contribute to the project. But given, you know, how, how little their financial situation is right now, um, they, they can't commit to a number without.
Do we have any, do we have any other leagues that, um, that we require to fundraise and give us money?
We don't have any other, we don't have any other leagues.
No, I mean, like the other, the other, um, sports leagues that use our fields, they don't, um, need to fundraise for, to maintain those fields. We maintain the fields. Um, but I think the, right. So I think for the Little League, it's an important project for us as a township because that's like the one main sports league that we have here. The location of the facility is like one of our town centers. Um, but I think it's important that they have skin in the game. So, a- and they're willing to commit as much as they can and just they can't, they don't have a number because they haven't raised the money yet. Um, so my recommendation would be, my position is that we pay for the fencing, put that in the budget, we get it done for them by opening day. We apply for the grant. We say we'll put up the matching funds, but we'll work with the Little League um, to raise as much of that as they can.
It just sounds weird. It just sounds weird.
Yeah, somewhere we can incentivize them to really be aggressive with the fundraising.
Can we just set a goal of twenty thousand dollars? Can they raise that much?
I don't think they.
I don't know.
I, I don't know. I don't, I don't know. They don't, I, I mean, I asked them.
I mean, if it's going to be a thousand dollars, then that's not going to be too useful. It's going to have to be.
I don't know, twenty thousand's really going to be that useful.
Well, it, that's a, an amount that I could envision that they could raise. If we ask them to raise a hundred thousand dollars, I, I think that's unreasonable. A one thousand dollars is not going to be very impactful.
Twenty thousand over the, over the span of a season?
But what if they can raise more?
That's what I'm saying. We don't want to lift them and say at a minimum.
I, I, I really do think these guys are committed to, I mean, I don't think they feel like they're sort of riding on our generosity. I think that they're very appreciative of the improvement we've already done. And I think these are improvements that are really necessary to that park to begin with, whether or not they contribute financially at all.
Agree with that.
But, you know, but, but if they are willing to, to fundraise as much as they can, they have a year to do it. If we don't get the grant, they have another year. And so, or if they're, because it's not as though we're gonna build this now.
But we don't need to restrict their fundraising to just one year despite the fact that.
Of course.
So we could say, up into a, a portion of the grant, but for a series of years until they can get to that portion of the grant to satisfy? Or is that too much like a contract?
Well, relating to what the staff is asking us about whether we should expend our own, own funds.
Yeah, we should.
I think we're in agreement that that can be done.
The grant is the next meeting, right? Wait, the grant is the next meeting, so I can talk to them more.
Yeah, maybe you can fill them out a little bit more about what the expectation would be and then come back to the board with that information. It, it's hard for us to know, just, you know, what, what their ability is, what they can contribute. I, I feel like it's a, if we don't ask any other groups of athletes to do this, I'm not sure how, how to treat this.
Which money do they have in the bank already?
I haven't looked at their books. I don't think they're flush.
I don't know about that. But, so yeah, we'll do the fence.
And I'll, I'll take these comments to the Little League and see if we can come up with a more concrete proposal for the matching funds when we consider the grant application at our next meeting. We have time, right?
We can do it at the next meeting. We'll need a decision then because the grants are due at the, the end of that week, November thirtieth.
Okay, but we're.
So we'll, we'll, we'll plan, everybody's here and we'll plan on doing the fence as soon as we can earlier in, in next year. And we will add some money, well, actually, I don't think, we'll just note it in our capital plan because it's not going to be money that will be spent in twenty twenty four. We'll note in the capital plan that the township will provide that match with, you know, some contribution from the Little League.
Because that's like a separate deal with, okay.
Yeah, I mean, I, yeah, I, I related then because of the proposal that we do the fencing as the match, but that will require that we delay the fencing another year, or more.
And then the YMCA pickleball courts, do you want to keep that in? You, you don't have to make that decision now. We could keep it in if you want to continue to have discussions with the YMCA.
Have we gotten any revised figures from the YMCA yet?
Unless it come in at the very end of the day.
Have we gotten any further input or clarification as to what the agreement is going to be?
No.
Yeah, so ultimately, I'm not going to be voting on whether we expend this money, but I think it's going to be a territorial and jurisdictional dispute of Y members versus Lower Gwinnett Township pickleball members and the use of those fields. I think if we're going to do pickleball courts, we should do them somewhere in the township. Very torturous issue over the years, but I just think we're going to spend that amount of money. Our residents should have full access.
And that's, I agree. I agree. If we're going to spend two hundred and fifty thousand dollars, I want to ensure that Lower Gwinnett residents have priority.
Could we just call it pickleball courts and not like specify where?
So if you, so then that's a different decision. If what you want to do is go ahead next year with it, you're giving up grant money.
No, no, no.
But in return for getting pickleball courts installed next year.
Right.
Which could be an option, but just keep in mind, you have a lot of projects in your capital plan. The faster you go through your reserves, at, at some point, you're then also going to slow up the process because we're not going to have that match in hand. It has to be secured one way or another. Then we are like trying to match one grant with another or like you got to wait for the Little League to raise money. And we're not, that's not like that's going to happen next year. You just want to, might want to be a little bit more cautious about.
Pickleball courts, pickleball courts without saying that the Y is ARPA money, correct? That's how we had identified it.
And it's not.
This isn't a match, because it says it right on my little special paper.
Is it? Okay. Right, no, we weren't going to use grant money. We were going to use township funds. So whether it's ARPA funding or reserves, either way, it's still coming out of.
So I just, I just wanted to clarify, pickleball is not being held for a match, or is it?
It, it was not at, because the idea was you're paying for it on a different property. I, I just want to say, and so we do have the reserves. If what you wanted to do is say, forget putting it at the Y, build it, it's proposed to Ben Ambler Park, go ahead with, with doing that. But you would, that is a great grant application. You would definitely.
And I don't think we need to specify if it's the YMCA or not, but if we know that that's roughly going to be the cost regardless of where it's going to be. And theoretically, it could be somewhere else and it could be.
Can we not pursue both of these in parallel?
We, we can then, but so we can, there will be grant applications that open up probably in the spring for park improvements. So we can look at it for that, but that, it's, that's twenty twenty, but it will apply in the spring. You'll find late in the year, you don't need to add that in the twenty four budget because it would be a twenty five project. That's all I was saying, like you don't. And, and again, we can, it's in the capital budget, so we can also leave it there if you, if you feel better with that because it's not affecting anything. It's use of reserves either way, right now. But just wanted to be, make sure everybody understands if what you want to do is, is prioritize that among the park improvements for a grant application. There would probably be other things we'd look at as part of that too. We can definitely do that. It's just more likely than it happens in twenty twenty five.
Right.
Gotcha.
Yeah, I, I would like to not give up on the YMCA, even though it's, sounds like it could be territorial issues. But I would like to move forward, at least in parallel, to explore a contract with the YMCA, what they put forward. Or what, I guess you would negotiate it? I don't know who's negotiating.
There would be multiple people involved with it. But I, and I think before you want to spend that time, it's are you comfortable spending two hundred and fifty thousand dollars on four pickleball courts on property you don't own? I'll tell you frankly, I, I do not recommend doing. You have a location, my, I totally agree with what Kathy is saying. You have a location on township property where you'd have total control.
What, why, what if we just call it pickleball courts, like leave it in there and then we'll make, we can make.
In the capital plan.
Yes. When we're talking about how we're prioritizing the parks and grant applications and.
Yeah, that's what I was trying to say. The only clarity I was looking for is it says ARPA right next to it, so I thought, I didn't know we were using it for a potential match. Pretty grants moving forward.
We weren't because this, we were looking at it just for the YMCA. But I, if, for the, because the, the other parks are just sort of lumped in, we haven't teased them out, the park board's still going through. That, you know, they're recommended sequencing and all of that. We haven't pulled that kind of detail.
Yeah.
Sounds good to me.
That's what I thought. Does the board have any questions about anything else?
I have what I think is a quick question. I know people are getting worn out. So I saw you budgeted some money to renovate the little entry area to the building.
You mean the landscaping?
Yeah, like six thousand dollars. Where did you come up with that number?
That was just for design and that was from Gilmore, just an estimated price of how much a landscape architect would charge to design it.
Okay, I, I had the impression that was for the whole job. It couldn't possibly be done for six thousand dollars.
Just for design work.
So is the plan just to get the design for next year and not do any actual work?
I would think by the time we get a design approved by everyone, it would be through the year and we would actually be doing the work in the next year.
Public Works can do some.
Yes, there's some removal that we would be able to do, planning, it would, the purchase of, I don't know what they're going to come up with, so I don't know what the cost of the purchase would be for new plants and new landscaping.
Okay, I, I would just be disappointed if it stretched, if it didn't get initiated groundbreaking some point next year. I've had a lot of, a number of inputs that that is not an attractive entry to the township building. Okay, thank you.
I just had a general question. We have a whole, well, we have a host of committees and it seems like, not all equally represented, but all of our committees aren't authorized to spend money without coming with the board first. So I would like to eliminate the idea of holding money in a separate fund for any committee that is a volunteer-based committee. Park and Rec has its own department, so that's different, but I was trying to find it in, I stole Janine's budget book. Yeah, I don't think that we should set money separately aside. The money is always going to be there in the same fashion that it's available for Historic or the HRC or any of our committees. I don't know why the money is held in a separate fund. I, I'm not really sure why we have.
You mean in a specific account?
Yeah, yeah. Why is it in a separate account? Like they, whatever they need.
That's separate from the tree giveaway.
That goes back to Mark Gray, but yeah, I don't, there's not really any need. The, the EAC kind of keeps track of how much money they're spending, so they try to stay within that bound, that limit.
Yeah, I don't think we should encumber the money in a, in a separate account. I think the tree giveaway is from a separate, it's totally separate from EAC in totality, so.
Well, you, you would need, if you want to spend it next year, you need to budget for it. You may not want it in, in that account or specifying just that commission, but if you want to have some money available for any of the volunteer commissions to use, it, it doesn't need to be in a separate account, but the money needs to be somewhere. So we could move it to like the executive or legislative funds in one of those, the supplies or meetings or something like that.
Item somewhere for it.
Exactly.
So is that, does that sound?
Do I think twenty thousand is an appropriate number? I think that's way too high.
Yeah.
Yeah, because I, because I feel like that number was maybe created that when the tree giveaway was being tossed.
The number was arbitrarily.
It, it was arbitrary or something.
Yeah, so I would, I agree. If, if we move it, you know, and then give it, put it in the executive line item about meetings and committee events and.
Yeah, but they're going to have to come to us anyway.
So, um, and, and next year, Melinda and I would like to, to work with the board to kind of clean up some of the budget. You have a lot of funds and a lot of accounts and some of the names of the accounts are kind of, you know, made sense probably more fifteen years ago and just aren't as much. So with that caveat, if we could move it to, um, there's the, the legislative budget meetings and conferences. For right now, there's like, if you're going to PSATs conference or things like that, we might want to rename it, make that a little clearer once we do that whole budget. How much money then would you want to?
I think twenty for all of it.
Maybe twenty and have it for, okay.
I think that's reasonable because the tree giveaway is separate and that's the huge, that's the real big, you know, financial commitment. I feel like any other time a committee comes to us to ask around like.
Like are there to speak out about?
Five hundred dollars.
There, there's gonna, there's going to be a joint meeting, I, I take it in January with the EAC and the board. And so I think there's going to be some proposals discussed. And not that it has to go on next year's budget, but I think some decisions, the EAC will come up with a list of objectives or recommendations that may need funding eventually.
I just, yeah, I guess the, the cleaning up of the line items was the only thing that I was trying to make it make sense. But outside of that, I wanted to thank you both.
Yeah.
For putting this together. It's beautiful. Appreciate the, the ease and readability and presentation of it. Thank you.
Is there anything else you guys need direction from us on, or can we vote to?
Can we?
Are we ready?
With our.
Because I think we're ready.
Changes.
Ready to go.
You ready to go?
Ready for a motion, yeah.
Okay, I'd like to make a motion to authorize the advertised two thousand and twenty four preliminary budget for public review and input. Is there a second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you so much. Next up is approval of the invoices and I think we got. Invoices were included in our board packet as well as we all got a, a packet handed to us. Is, are there any questions? Concerns, comments? No. I can make a motion to approve the invoices. Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Next up is approval of the minutes of an October twenty fourth, two thousand and twenty three meeting minutes. I think Janine has to abstain, but everybody else, did you get a chance to review the minutes? Any questions or concerns?
No.
Seeing none, I'd like to make a motion to approve. Is there a second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion does carry. Included in our board packet were our supervisor liaison reports. Are there any questions regarding those reports?
No.
Very good. Are there any staff updates?
There is one. Uh, we were going to fill you, the board, in on this on the night of game seven, which may have been a better use of our time, as it turns out. But we got an email from PennDOT notifying us that they are going to impose a weight restriction on Gypsy Hill Road where it crosses Willow Run, that bridge. They're going to give, um, have a twelve ton weight restriction on that, so.
Is that our fault because we asked for some markings? Because we asked for them to make it safer?
Yeah, I don't know. They, they do bridge inspections, you know, periodically, so.
Okay.
No good dego sometimes.
Awkwardly.
So, um, we can discuss this with you more, obviously, but one of the suggestions from chat from McMahon is that we submit a letter to PennDOT asking that this bridge be added to the tip, which is the Transportation Improvement Plan, I think. It's the funding plan that PennDOT and the Delaware Valley Regional Planning Commission put together for use of federal and state funds. It, you know, that's not the last step, but it's, I think, kind of a no-brainer that we go ahead and at least do that and then figure out what else. Maybe there are other grants that come along or other people we can talk to about really trying to get money from the tip.
Wait a minute, is putting it, are you suggesting we're going to ask to have the bridge widened or?
Replaced.
Replaced. That would be great. Okay, I agree with that.
And I, I'm sure it would be two lanes when it's replaced.
Yeah, instead of one and a half.
Because they're not going to replace it with a one lane, one and a half lane bridge, standard size.
Any additional things? Supervisor comments, Tessie?
I'd just like to thank the, the staff for putting together the budget and Melinda for continuing. It's, you know, I, I see the documents evolving and getting easier to read, uh, at least for me, a non-accountant. And so, uh, thank you. I appreciate that very much. That's all.
I'll second that.
I third that. I also want to thank the Veterans Day Planning Committee for putting on a wonderful event. I unfortunately was not able to attend, but heard from many residents and social media and that it was a really wonderful event. So thank you to everybody who had a hand in that, um, planning and our staff who helped the committee put it all together and for everyone who came up.
I'd like to second that as well as everyone who took time and attention to put together this, the, the budget, as well as I wanted to send out prayers and thoughts to Reverend Juan of Bethel Baptist Church, who I know is recovering from any illness. We have been thinking about him and praying for him, so I want to extend those thoughts and prayers. With that, I'd like to make a motion to adjourn. Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Meeting is adjourned. Thank you.